You going?
Morning is.
Yeah.
Red dot.
Okay. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It is 6:31 on Wednesday, October 8th. We are in the DPW conference room and also on the Teams platform. And members present from my left.
Eric Russell.
Dan Kylie.
I'm David Frack.
Nate Miller.
Paul Vianco.
Bill Griffin, alternate.
And Jorgensen, alternate.
Kurt Carthart, alternates.
Okay, so we are down two people. Unless anybody thinks Linda and Tim are coming?
Tim is not coming.
Tim is not coming.
He sent us a note, said he wasn't coming.
Okay.
I haven't heard from Linda. I would assume maybe we'll see her, but.
She's usually here a few minutes early. Let's.
Do you want to elevate a couple right now?
Yeah, I'm gonna elevate. I don't know who wants to volunteer. Ben?
Sure.
And Kurt? No?
No.
All right.
I've been.
All right.
Times.
Okay, Ben and Bill.
There you go.
So. First order of business is approval of minutes, starting with the 10th of September.
If anybody needs copies, I'm happy to make copies, but definitely have favorite copies. We're starting with October 1st?
No, it was September 10th.
September 10th, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't have a problem with them. When I read them.
You didn't have a problem? Would you like to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the minutes of September 10th as published.
Who would like to second that?
Second.
Seconded by Paul. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions unanimous. Next minutes of September 24.
Site plan, Ian.
Uh, let's do the site plan first, okay?
The site visit.
Site visit, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I guess all I can say is that's what happened.
Those are my minutes. I made those for.
Yeah, Rob made. It's all, it's all, Rob made it happen.
Minutes were spot on.
We walked and we walked too much.
We just kept walking.
Move to approve the minutes of September 24th site visit.
Motion made by Ben Jorgensen, seconded by Bill Griffin. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Chairman David.
Yes, sir.
On the approval of the minutes for September 10th. I need to change my vote from approval to abstention.
Okay.
You are allowed to approve if you, even though you're absent, but. Many people abstain, but I don't think it's part of Robert's rules that.
That's correct.
You can express your faith in there.
I am, I am faithful.
Okay. And actually, these days, if, for example, I voted for minutes because I watched the meeting recording, then I know the minutes are accurate to. And so.
Mm-hmm. It's perfect. Although. You did not watch the, the video of the site.
Okay.
Doing it because there was none.
Yep.
Okay. Next, September 24th public hearing.
Those are here. Don't all jump on this at once, guys.
Don't worry, he's still reading.
Anybody want to make a motion? If everybody's fully agreeing.
I make the motion, we approve the minutes of the, you know, planning board meeting of September 24th.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions unanimous. And finally, October 3rd, uh, 1st, I'm sorry.
Just got those to that.
Yep. Any discussion? Motion?
Make a motion, we accept the planning board minutes of October 1st.
Do I hear a second? Bill Griffin seconds it. All in favor?
Discussion?
Discussion. Discussion. I'm sorry, Nate.
Yeah, just line 29, Mr. Miller asked about a parking space shown next to the building in terms of access to the ADA space. I wasn't actually asking about access to the ADA space. I was, I was noting that maneuvering around the ADA space would require a blind traffic movement. That was.
Yep, okay.
So I think that probably should be corrected to reflect.
Okay. We will ask our minutes clerk to make that correction.
Duly noted. Then I'll make my motion as amended.
Motion made to accept the minutes as amended by Mr. Miller. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Bill Griffin. All in favor? Aye, opposed, abstentions.
On. Later.
Okay.
Ben is abstaining.
Ben abstains because he wasn't here.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
We didn't.
That was the fastest going through four sets of minutes that I've ever seen. Um. Okay. So. There are none. Conceptuals, Indian River Realty, Granite Place.
Hi, how are you?
Thank you for being here early. I didn't expect us to get through the minutes as quickly as we did.
Neither, and I do apologize. We don't have copies for everybody because I didn't know how many.
This is good. Okay, would you tell us who you are?
Okay, my name is Jennifer Barton and I work for Indian River Realty. It's actually a family-owned business. We have a number of rentals, commercial and residential in the Enfield-Kanin area. And we actually own the Lynn Care Building. It's the 571 U.S. Route 4. It's kind of diagonal from Dunkin' Donuts. And so what we're here here today to do is to talk to you about, we are considering putting in a, a multi-use building. There'd be commercial on the bottom floor, top floors, two top floors would have residential apartments. We would need to jump through some hoops with the state in regards to curb cuts and there's some wetlands. There's acres there, Lynn Care's on an acre, and then the, the acre to the left. It's the one that abuts the SAU road coming up. There's another acre there. So before we really went ahead full steam and had on this, kind of wanted to get your input, your guidance. Is this something that you, you'd like to see that you'd welcome?
Time brought up just for everybody's.
This is a conceptual.
Yeah. Here's the Kanin line, this law, 18-2, that's our new public safety complex right here, Baker Hill Granite in the back. Lynn Care is this law you're here.
Right.
Um, this is still owned by Keith Hess, I believe.
It is.
Yeah, he sold his business though, right?
Oh, I didn't know that. I just see the Hess trucks going in.
He still retains the real estate. Obviously, this, like she just referenced, is SAU band where the district office is.
That is correct. Um, so this is a conceptual drawing. Right now, this is kind of what we're looking at. We would be wanting to put in, in order for this to be financially feasible for us, we'd want to put in eight apartments. They'd be small, one-bedroom apartments. And so there'd probably be a little stairway here alcove, but kind of be more like of a, I don't know, not honestly new, but triangular shape sitting there. But again, that all depends on architectures and, and the space and all that, but everything that they have to do in regards to runoffs and lights and parking and all that good stuff. But again, we would have to go to the state for curb cut approval. There is some wetlands in there, so we'd need to work them on that. This is something that we'd want to put on a slab. We would not have a basement. The types of commercial that we're looking to try to bring in, you know, everybody, my family, wants something. I want a laundromat in there, only because I'm tired of all my other tenants complaining that there's no place for them to do laundry.
Smell of you.
It really is. That's something I really want. Um, so a bakery, nice bakery, uh, you know, there's just different things. And we're also open to ideas and willing to go out and try to find people to fill them because that's my job. So anybody have any question?
How many commercial establishments would be?
We're looking for, we're looking for six. I'm looking for six, only because I'd really like them to be somewhat small in a footprint. I'm seeing that there's a trend right now for commercial space to be really small, compact, quick and easy. So, but if need be, it could be just three, and then what we would do is just expand the sizes down here.
So.
Yeah.
And figure that as needed.
Exactly, right. That's one thing I've learned to, to do is adapt.
So what timeline are you looking at?
So if we were to receive your, your backing and say, yeah, this is a great idea. You think this would really be good for the, for the community, then a lot of the legwork would start now and we would hope to really, it really depends on the state, what was getting approved and pushed through and how quickly, but, you know, for us, the sooner the better. So it's something we'd be working.
We're working on a zoning change, and this is in the Route 4 district, which is on the table for change. Okay, and depending on what we present, and then depending on what town meeting does, it could be completely different. And what's in the reg. Basically, it's going to be completely different. What we present, it really depends on what the voters do.
Mm-hmm.
And so I don't know, the architect's gonna have to know what's to design to.
Right, exactly. I understand that.
So it's sort of like.
Yeah.
How much, how long do you want to wait and hope and hope?
And so when does all that take place?
March 15th?
Well, anything that would be allowed today would still be allowed.
Yes, yeah, but, but if we're more restrictive or what's.
So it may open things up and make it more flexible.
Yeah.
But any designs that happen today under the current ones would still be allowed.
Oh, right, right. If you wanted to design to what's on the books now, you can go right ahead.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not really so much right now concerned with the design as I am just really getting through to the state. We didn't want to put that time and effort and money into pulling the permits and doing all that without you all saying, yeah, we think this would be good for, for the town, for the vitality of it. Then all the design and all of that can come later, and that works extremely adaptable too. Not like we have in our mind, okay, this is what we want. No, we just would like to offer housing and offer some commercial space.
So the, the total number of dwelling units on the property is what?
That'd be to be determined based on the, the actual property size and again with what the architects and civil engineers are going to come up with. But we're looking for, for it to make some financial sense for us to invest all the money, it would be from six to eight apartments. Um, my father, who was really the one pushing us, he wants eight. Me, I'm saying six, just, um, so we're somewhere in there, him and I. So it's either going to be six to eight.
Yeah, okay, that, that's in a new, newly constructed building.
Correct.
Or set of buildings.
Correct.
I, I think I heard you say you're gonna put residential above the Lynn Care Building or?
For this, there would be residential, so it'd be commercial and then residential.
Okay.
If the Lynn Care would be, that building's separate, completely separate. This would be on the other parcel.
Uh, two different parcels?
Two different.
Okay.
Yes.
I got it.
Yep. Exactly.
Other questions from board members?
I, I think conceptually, the combination of residential and commercial is keeping of Enfield's planning historically, and I really applaud that effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with Ben. I mean, you know, there's a lot of talk obviously about zoning changes and things like that. The Route 4 district as it exists today was pretty much conceived to have that type of, of development there.
Makes sense.
You know, uh, the commercial, you know, non-residential on the ground floor, residential above it, mixture of uses. Um, you know, closer, closer to the roadway, more walkable, more of a, you know,
Yeah.
mixed-use village type of setting.
Yeah, without re-reading all the regs, which I haven't, that section we haven't done for a while, and we haven't had a project there. It was, I don't know if Rob knows off the top of his head, it was mixed use, it's okay close to the roads. So I thought there was some, if it was straight residential.
Straight residential, 300 feet back.
Yeah, okay.
Multi-use was to the road.
Okay.
Okay. And, and it says 12, 12 dwelling units per acre.
Right.
So if you're fine.
Same would be fine.
Right.
It's that's. Yeah, and we did talk about the existing building. They, they've actually had some interest in maybe putting some residential on the ground floor, and so we did talk about that needing a special exception.
Right.
Yeah.
We've done that several times through the zoning board.
Mm-hmm.
So if they want to do that sooner than later, that would absolutely be possible, and I would help guide them through that, but.
Yeah.
Right.
This is essentially a, be a second building on this same law.
On the same lot. It's not subdivided, but there's a little over two acre, well, it's 1.93 acres, what it says here, so, and then Lynn Care's more over to the right.
So it's gonna be.
I call it Lynn Care, so I shouldn't call it Lynn Care anymore, but.
And this may, maybe for Rob more than anything.
Yeah.
Um, I know Granite Place is a private drive. It's not a town road. But obviously, this property abuts it. Do you know, Rob, what the status of that, like, is that an option for them at all to put the driveway in the back of the property off of Granite Place instead of off of Route 4? Is that something worth exploring?
Yeah, I, I think it is. Actually, I think, I think town manager has actually expressed some interest in actually taking over that road.
Yeah, no, it plays, right, but for right now, it's not. We, we have taken over responsibility for, like, it's gonna be plowed because it's our entrance to the public safety building. But right now, it's easement since it's a private road, so they may or may not be allowed to access. I don't know the rule.
I'm talking about for the curb cut.
For the curb cuts. I understand. That might be something worth exploring.
Right, so we actually did look at that, and there is enough room because the, the way the Lynn, again, I call it Lynn Care, but the Lynn Care parking lot is so big that we can actually take the, um, take a driveway and come down right behind the Lynn Care. There's enough room in between there, and then have the parking for the apartments maybe more behind, and then have commercial parking and all that more up in the front, and that's why we really would want to go for a curb cut.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that's, that's your problem.
Right, yep, but we did.
It, it's, it's very much worth considering, and as Route 4 builds out, access management becomes more and more important, and any opportunity that we have to use existing infrastructure to access commercial properties along Route 4 is a huge advantage to everybody involved.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the, the more curb cuts that might not be needed, that, that are promulgated across the corridor over time, create traffic conflicts, safety issues, congestion,
Yeah.
et cetera, et cetera.
Your site distances are better too.
Yeah.
And they are.
So you prefer, you think it would be best to do?
That would be my personal.
All the traffic.
But there's not, it's not a zoning requirement.
No, no, but we, we.
I think limiting the curb cuts would be a good idea. That's why I'm suggesting.
Okay, all right. No, that's what we want is your.
Because that may be where the state comes from is also site distance. Because that is on a hill further down, so it may become a site distance issue where they may want you to go Granite Place.
What do you think about the SAU road, and that's, how does that work? Because that actually, I think.
That'd be one you could talk to them.
Yeah, that might actually be a little bit.
SAU about.
Right.
That, but that's another possibility.
Because there wouldn't be so much coming in and out because it's just the ones that work there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Either option would achieve the access management goal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, and then, you know, if they were saying the state would probably prefer that existed, you know, less curbs, right, and more, so. Yeah.
So design with that in mind.
Yeah.
As, as two options, and that'll save you going to the state.
Right.
And.
Funny, too.
While, while in theory, they're supposed to respond within a short period of time, uh, we don't know that that's always true.
Right.
So.
The other, the state may still want to be notified because you're adding curbs, traffic to curb cuts onto the road.
Yeah, right.
But.
But you're not.
But you're not adding any.
But you just. You're making a free existing curb cut.
Right, yeah.
There's also a really nice rail trail access going down our little road there, Hardy Road.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's interesting, other places on Route 4, unless you own the land that abuts the rail trail, you don't have as good access to get down there, but these guys would be right across the street from a really good access to the rail trail, which I think is awesome for their, for their future tenants.
Yeah.
So, um, question, the SAU, who would I talk to about that? Who actually, is it?
I don't know. So, I say you.
Just the SAU office.
It would have to be approved by the school board.
School board, that's what I wanted to know.
Amanda would bring it to the school as the superintendent.
My children have been out of school for a while.
Yep, Amanda Isabel at the SAU office would be the person to talk to.
Is the superintendent.
All right, perfect. All right.
Make a good deal from them if you put some asphalt on their rock driveway.
True, true, you know, that's an incentive here. We will pave.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, thank you very.
Well, thank you for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you for your input.
Yeah. We hope to see you with an application.
Yeah.
To distant future.
Thank you.
Um.
And if anybody has any questions in the meantime, or if anything else comes up, um, Rob is my, he's gonna, you have my contact information, so just shoot me an email or give me a. And I will get out of your way.
All right, keep in touch.
Thank you, and I will. Thanks, thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, great. Um. Renee, are you ready?
Hi.
Hi, we're a little early.
Um.
I, I can fill the time if you.
Fill the time. I have a question for Rob.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna fill the time with some comments on our public hearing for Larrimy Farms on the 24th or whatever it was.
Yeah.
Um. I hope everybody is aware that a public meeting and a public hearing are two different animals. A public hearing is held within a public meeting. And the public hearing is governed by our rules of procedure, which are in, they're in your book under planning board rules of procedure. Um. I'd like to highlight a, just a few of the requirements. I know some people have reached out to me to ask or complain about the previous hearing. Um, and if anybody asks any of you, I would like all of us to be on the same page. So the way it's supposed to work is the applicant or representative shall be invited to present the details and must physically attend the meeting. Members of the board may ask questions following the presentation. Any party to the matter who desires to ask a question of another party must go through the chairman. Um, a party is an abutter, a party of, a person or entity of interest. The general public who does not qualify as a statutory party is just the public. Um. Any any applicant, any abutter, or any person with direct interest in the matter may testify in person or in writing. Other persons, meaning the public, may testify as permitted by the chairman at each hearing. Each person who speaks shall be required to state his or her name and address and indicate whether she, he is a party to the matter or an agent or counsel to a party to the matter. The chairman shall recognize members of the public who wish to speak for or against the application. It's been my practice for 20 years or so on land use board to not only recognize members of the public to speak for or against, but also to be involved in a dialogue, to ask questions. And I certainly intend to, um, continue that practice, even though it's a little bit more than our regulations rules, um, specify. I think it makes for a better hearing, makes for better public involvement. And, um, I intend to continue that way unless we have people who abuse that. Um. Let's see. The chairman shall recognize all members of the public who wish to speak before allowing additional rounds of comments from the public. The chairman may limit the time allowed for each member to comment as long as all members are recognized. And that's about it. So. I, I expect to give or a similar introduction at the next hearing so that everybody is on the same page. And hopefully, we will not have, um, people. yelling and screaming about public comments and right to no law and open meetings and um, we will have questions come through the chair and then I will recognize somebody to respond.
There's also one other difference between public comment and public hearing, which is the comment has to be germane to the public here. You can't, public comment period, people can say whatever they want about whatever they want. But in a public hearing, their comments or their speech or their questions has to be relevant to the public's hearing. You can't just go off on a tangent, um, because that becomes a problem in a public hearing.
Exactly. And in the case of Laramie, where the public hearing is, has been continued and is going to be continued and we're breaking it down um, essentially article by article in the um, review standards. The public comments for any particular meeting are going to be limited to the subject at hand. And one thing that I've asked Rob to do is to put in the agenda what the anticipated topics are for any particular section of the hearing or evening. And hopefully, we'll be able to gain a little bit more coherence and be able to focus. So that's um, that's what I gotta say. Kurt?
Uh, just two clarification comments. Um, the last part you just talked about being listed in the agenda, I think is good, but we have to stay to the agenda. We can't, we as a board can't decide to then start talking about something else on Laramie Farms that's not the topic in the agenda.
Agreed. Yep.
Because then we'll get into trouble of it's not mosted.
Yep.
Um, and the other comment is without reading the bylaws in front of me, the wording, just saying public and then a butter as two separate entities or an interested party. I think anybody that comes to the meeting, stands up and wants to speak, should be allowed to. You can't say, well, you're not a butter or you're not an interested party, um, we're not gonna allow you to speak. I think, I think we'll end up in court if we try that.
Yeah, and as I said, the rules of the hearing allow members of the public who are not abutters or statutory parties. The rules allow the chairman discretion as to whether.
Yeah, I don't think you have discretion unless you want to go to court.
Um.
Someone wants to speak to the topic on the agenda and they're not on a butter and you and you feel they're not an interested party because they live too far away. Even if they're from another town, because it is a regional impacts. Um, I think we're gonna be in trouble, get in trouble.
Uh, there is new RSA that says that if you are if you live across town, you don't have party status.
No, I I understand that. But party status has other legal implications to it, where they can go to court.
Right.
As just to oppose the whole projects, just like in a butter can. Um, someone, member of the public wishing to speak to the issue is a separate issue.
No, I I intend to let members of the public speak. But if things get out of hand, I may gavel them down.
Um, just to clarify, the the procedures allow interested parties as defined by statute priority in the discussions.
Yes.
And the public at your discretion.
Right.
At the time. And so it's a time, place, and manner of management, which is certainly not gonna get us sideways with anybody. I, you know, that, you know, everyone can't speak at any time on any subject that they want to. There's a procedure. But there's a procedure that permits the general public to speak, provided there's time and provided the interested parties have already exhausted their opportunity to speak. And the interested parties are defined by state statute.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Right. I mean, but if you start off with, what I'm still saying at the very beginning, everybody has X amount of minutes to speak. Um, and then whoever's at the microphone gets to speak. Now, here we don't have the microphone, but if they're in the audience with their hand raised, they wish to speak. They should be permitted to speak. And then you can say, anybody else, oh, hands not raised, we're cutting it off.
Right.
Um, type of thing.
Okay.
But so if someone's standing there with their hand raised and are you, are the meeting, oh, it's like reset the time prior to the whole thing's starting, nine o'clock, we're done. The meeting's finished.
Mm-hmm.
And everybody gets five minutes. So if you want your five minutes first, get your hand up.
You can set reasonable ground rules for time of length of comment.
Yeah, right.
They must be fairly and equally applied.
Right, right, yeah.
Uh, so somebody's gonna be watching the timer.
Somebody needs to.
Yeah.
It's easy enough to do.
Yeah.
The vice chair is gonna be the timer. I can watch the clock. Okay.
You know, you, what you could do is say, you know, uh, abutters and, you know.
Abutters and interested.
Abutters and statutory parties or however you want word it, you know.
Get to speak first.
Speak first.
Well.
And again, and the municipalities and the Regional Planning Commission, because this is a D R I.
Interested.
Are afforded under state law the status of a butter.
Right, right.
Other municipalities that wish to provide testimony and then then are here in person, they have the same status of a butter. They are in that first tranche of who would be able to to speak. Uh, and then the general public.
Yeah.
Yeah, you you could set, you know, three minutes or whatever time limit. Uh, but yes, it 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 does need to be monitored and it does need to be fairly and equally applied.
Yeah. I believe you could also change the time limits between abutters, interested.
Yeah, you could.
Public. You could say interested parties and abutters get a five minute, where general public gets three.
Mm-hmm. It's standing up front.
It's standing up front. Because at some point, if there's a hundred people out there, you can't go five hours.
Right, right. That's what I'm saying. It's like.
You're just gonna stand up front.
We are droning.
At eight thirty.
At eight thirty.
Yeah.
And that, so get your hand up before eight thirty.
Right.
If you want to speak.
I mean, that was kind of what we did at the.
Yeah, but it wasn't announced prior. It has to be announced prior.
You start with the ground rules.
Yes, okay, right.
Yes, yeah. You can't go halfway through and say, oh, well, we're getting.
I mean, in 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 my, in my mind, when I, when I gave the times of the um, different agenda items um, at the very beginning, you know, to me, it was obvious that if we're starting the next hearing at eight ten or whatever, that the previous hearing would end at eight ten. But I I think probably a little better explanation um, will help. So now that we've covered that, uh, Renee, are you ready? Come on up.
Come on down.
If I get to play Finko. All right.
Finko, that's the one you would pick if you were done called up?
I think it's kind of the most fun, but there is the mini, the putt putt one is fun too.
That is.
I like the putt putt. So maybe that. Fun to watch. Um, all right, well, good evening, everybody. Um, then you got passed around the small packet. Um, we had our work cut up for us the last week, um, looking up some information on uh, adding, gathering some information on previous coverage, et cetera. Um, which of course, that made me think when I heard, I jumped on earlier to listen on my drive in, was the twelve, twelve units on the one acre and wondering how that correlates with impervious, but we can get to that. Um, so, um, put the pencil to the grindstone a little more on the proposed lot sizes downtown being none. Um, additional acreage being none, obviously, frontage. So the biggest thing with the frontage, I know we talked about zero requirement for frontage, zero requirement for lot size. The issue with that then comes in the driveway and or the potential to create back lots in existing or flag lots as well. So there has to be some avenue to um, capture that and apply it. Um, looking at Lebanon's, they recently did um, the pattern overlay district. Is anyone familiar with that recent update to their amendment? Yeah. So that one is really cool and does create back lots. Um, it was through their first HOP round grant they had. Um, and it was primarily in their R two um, and downtown district. So very familiar, very comparable to where we're looking for Enfield in a way. Um, so they have in their language um, fifteen feet ri- um, frontage or driveway fifteen feet via a deed at easement. And it is very well spelled out because I think that's the biggest thing statutorily for the state, that it has to be spelled out as to how you gain that access to the road. Um, so that is on. Yes, yes, on the front page in the bottom. Um, the first little asterisk, fifteen feet road frontage minimum, ours deemed necessary from the driveway permit. Um, and then we have in there the requirements um, for that to not create a landlocked lot, because you don't want to do that. Any questions or thoughts so far on frontage requirements?
On the, unless the laws changed, and I'm not familiar with the new one. It's thoughts, any lot had to have road frontage on a class five or better road.
Mm-hmm.
But how do they get away with the driveway?
The deed at easement, because it's 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 basically shared access. You are saying that this driveway is now co-owned by both lots.
Okay, okay. So and the best was just a right of way over someone else's ranch.
Mm-hmm. But there's a deed at easement that it is written in a deed to the property as it sells.
So they both own.
Right, so it's both.
They both own the same driveway.
So like, you own one half and I own the other half on paper, sort of.
And we could keep our, we could keep our present one, which is you can't have more than two.
Yeah.
Two, two, two lots on one driveway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So how many curb cuts are we looking at the possibility of two curb cuts, one for the back lot, one for the main lot?
Um, one.
One.
One. And we're talking downtown still, not, or well, Route Four pending, maybe different due to New Hampshire D O T curb cut allowances and what they require. Um, so that could follow. So any other roads, we're kind of like, there's Route Four, but then there's also all the rest of the roads in that district.
In the planning session that we actually hosted, the uh, conference back in June.
Mm-hmm.
The Lebanon folks made a presentation about this.
Yeah.
Right.
And one of the reasons they decided to go this way was that they actually looked at the existing conditions and there were lots of these already in existence. Sort of a house behind the house. And they had obviously worked out the access. I'm typically not a big fan of uh, shared driveways because what always happens? Yes, people get fighting with each other.
Right.
And it's like, this road needs to be fixed. No, it doesn't. And they just fight over it all the time.
Yeah.
But it's a good way to squeeze in more lots, for sure.
I guess getting back to just Route Four, Main Street's also a state road. So Main Street would all should be covered by that, by the same as Route Four is.
Route Four.
So would would we then say in the regs that um, the driveway has to be shared and only a single curb cut?
Yeah, so there's um, language in here that um, references a perpetual deed at easement. Uh, the creation of a rear lot without street frontage required by RSA six seventy four forty one may only be approved if all of the following conditions are met. Perpetual deed at easement in favor of the rear lot to use a driveway access. Um, which, across a lot which does have legally sufficient frontage and identifying maintenance responsibilities shall be submitted with the application for approval by the planning board. The driveway shall be shown in the subdivision plan. The planning board shall determine the driveway is sufficient for access to the rear lot. I mean, again, this is.
That's good.
This is a conversation from the board. I mean, our recommendation is that there is some form of frontage. Um, and, you know, looking at the downtown acreage requirements, I was a little hesitant. We went back and forth, a couple of us, on like the acreage requirements. Um, but looking at some of the existing conditions, you know, you have a new build, the sixth unit um, on point one nine acres, I believe it is. So obviously, it can be done um, on those smaller lots. And so if we're trying to make that, it does have a good bit of frontage there. But, yeah. Nate, you were gonna say something.
Uh, yeah, I wasn't here for a lot of this discussion unfortunately last week. Sorry about that, but um. Um, I am generally, in terms of the minimum lot size being minimal, I think downtown is the most appropriate place for that. I think for a few reasons. Uh, it's the most constrained.
Mm-hmm.
It's constrained by environmental features. It's, and and largely already built out. So what's going to happen there is largely going to be redevelopment. And I I think flexibility makes sense in in the downtown area.
Oh, yeah. Clarification. Never mind, um, the village is, well, it's down, we have village and we have downtown.
Village is the surrounding downtown.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay.
The purple up there is the, is the downtown.
Eighteen town village. I agree with you.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I get those before.
We forget that we're not talking.
I always think of going downtown to Enfield downtown.
Right.
Is.
The village.
That's what we call in village. So, yeah.
So it's just the purple area that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Everything else is either Route Four or the village.
Yeah.
Because of the constraints there, because of the, you know, it's largely going to, what happens there will largely be redevelopment rather than greenfield development, I think.
Mm-hmm.
That some of, some of this flexibility makes sense. Not really sold on the fifteen feet of frontage. A lot of what would happen downtown is non-residential or multifamily in nature. I think fifteen feet might work if you had single family house behind a single family house and you have one kind of, you know, driveway with that in mind. Most non-residential and then multifamily, they're gonna need at least twenty feet
Mm-hmm.
Uh, just for their paved driveway throat with maybe drainage or or something to the side of that or potential drain slopes on each side. Fifteen feet for that sort of thing is a minimum puts you into the realm of a lot of shared driveway uh, agreements. And I don't know that there's a, you know, pressing need to be quite that narrow in in the downtown, given what is likely going to be the forms of development that occur there, which is multifamily and and non-residential.
So then just on that, but one thing that I suggested last time was um, that there be no minimum road frontage so long as a driveway permit is obtained. The driveway permit must be obtained before subdivision is approved. So give flexibility on what that is, but if you can't get a driveway permit, you can't subdivide it.
Yeah, it's.
Does that sound workable? Then that's.
I I think you could be into a lot of shared driveway agreements with that type of scenario. And sometimes those go south.
So before that, I actually wrote, all lots must must have owned road frontage on the street providing access to the lot.
Owned road frontage, okay.
Yeah.
So when you combine those two, they could have any, they have to own the road frontage. The road frontage itself is very dynamic depending on.
What does own road frontage mean?
It has to be part of your lot.
Yeah, I know, but I mean.
Yeah, I mean, like.
What's, frontage is in the eye of the beholder, but it's that vague, right?
What's vague about the road frontage on the road?
I don't know.
On the street providing access.
If you own fifteen feet, that's good enough.
If you can get a, if you.
If you can get a driveway.
If you can get a driveway.
Puts you into shared driveway territory. Yeah, I mean, it's not against shared driveways. I just think they go south uh, somewhat regularly.
Yeah.
There's a lot of court cases over shared driveways. They're trying to take care of it with, uh, I heard it in there.
Actually, take it back. Why would there be a shared driveway if both of the new lots are required to have enough road frontage and a driveway permit? Why would there ever be a shared driveway required, a required shared driveway, I should say?
Well, they could get a driveway permit, but we don't, does that driveway permit in your language have to be all on their road frontage?
I guess that's.
That that's the, you know, that's the differentiator.
Yeah.
Yeah, do they have to put their driveway on their owned lot or is it easement? I mean, I think, again, I think that the back lots and flag lots, I, I, you know, went back to the team and we had concerns because it was. If there's no road frontage and no lot size requirement whatsoever in a zone. That just is gonna perpetuate back lots and flag lots. And so to at least have something in there to mention that, but if you want, I again, I think it is advisable to go to a twenty or twenty-five foot. So that you're clear, um, but again, that's up to the purview of.
But don't we like flag lots?
Um, it's not that we, it's not that flag lots are not like, it's just again, the. Uh, flag lots are often meaning that you have that shared driveway to that back. You don't have to.
Or you have a lot of, you know.
So but usually, yeah, and usually the flag lots, though, the flag, the staff are, will have at least that minimum requirement of the twenty or twenty-five feet. Which again is fine, if that's what your requirement is, then you do, then flag lots are fine. But it's more the back lot if you're just set, if someone has the.
Right, it's.
Parcel.
Yeah, I mean, the term flag lot has a lot of planning connotation to it. Um, which I disagree with personally, but that's what's out there. But he was just saying backlots.
Right.
Um, and meaning that he, that backlot technically does not have. Road frontage, but but they have to get there somehow.
Right.
So, so historically, it was just a right of way over someone else's property. Um, but the IRS says they really, it's not not permitted. You either have to, like, I guess what they do in Lebanon is you both have it in your deed as you own that triple lands jointly. To gain access to the back section.
And you know, going in.
What's?
And you know, going in.
Going in, yeah.
That is your access.
But you're still gonna have all the main, all the disagreements.
Right.
Our potential for disagreements because one wants the pavement and the other one doesn't, one doesn't like the plow job.
Right. It's a civil matter.
Right, but it becomes a civil matter and you you buy into that when you buy the place.
Right.
And Lebanon did identify in their requirements that there is a maintenance um plan that's identified. And that it's responsible, responsibility shall be submitted with the application. So it, you have to have it outlined before you even, but to try to try to buffer some of that, but I do agree, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, um, yeah, the bottom one, sorry, I forgot this one. Yeah, so.
If if we use similar language, should we say that um the maintenance agreement? Uh, gets filed with the registry of deeds and runs with the land?
Um, yes, there is language with the registry of deeds, uh. Yep, so the execution recording of the easement in the registry of deeds shall be a condition of approval. That is, yeah, I can kind of what happened, you know, our conversation from last week. And kind of looking at dimensional controls for the downtown, um.
And we're just talking downtown, right?
We're just talking downtown right now. I mean.
Much grown out.
The Marley, we did say the same for Enfield Village because that came up for Enfield as well, but.
Yeah, yeah, but like Nate said, it just, it will be redevelopment. What's gets there, gets turned down, and then someone comes in and starts drawing lines on a piece of paper.
Somebody tears down Davidson's apartments.
Oh, well, George's.
Or George's.
You know, all the buildings next to it disappear because.
The three in a row there.
Yeah. Right, and then someone just starts doing the site plan and making lots of little lots. And decides to sell them simply.
Yeah, and and that's where like, you know, it's a little bit, I guess. Less of a concern in the downtown because it's mostly built out. You start getting to Route four, more greenfield areas, you can have a million curb cuts.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it becomes a real access management kind of kind of issue. Uh, the downtown will less concerning just because it's small, constrained and largely built out. But yeah, I mean, that that.
I'm just gonna have a hard time getting back lots because you've got a river that you have to have setbacks too.
Right.
I don't know if there's no, but there's no acreage requirement, I mean, uh, if someone did individual structure versus apartments. Yeah, because there's no lot limits and they found it easier.
Yeah.
And they can maybe make more money by selling individually.
Mm hmm.
You know, that could have happened. Um, we can't say it's not gonna, won't happen.
Oh, I'm not saying it's not.
If it's permitted, it could happen.
Right, yeah.
Far more likely in Route four and other parts of.
Than it is downtown.
Is downtown, but yeah.
Right, yeah, what everyone's just saying is. It's not a hypothetical because if it's permitted, you're saying you can do this if you wish, if you wish, you can do this.
Right, and if it's a good plan.
Mm hmm. While we're bad plan, but it's permitted. That's all, it's just if you permit it, then.
Yeah.
Expect it, I guess is what I'm saying.
So that is for discussion, continue and continue to kind of mull on and again, I think we have a little bit of this month to kind of. Chomp through this a little bit and think of on time, you know, as it gets closer to the November Pinfield eighth um. Public forum that we're looking at holding, so still have a little bit of time, maybe.
No, we don't.
Twenty second, you don't really, yeah.
No.
I mean, and I mean, the public forum, you know, you could propose some of this and see what the feedback is. And it's a draft before the first even public hearing, which is still draft form in December, so there's still some wiggle room. Um, but, um.
Can I just ask a question, just?
Yeah.
Just throwing an idea out here. If downtown frontage was fifty feet and not fifteen, does that constrain anything that would otherwise happen in the downtown? If you had a fifty-foot frontage, that was enough for even two twelve-foot lanes with drainage slopes on either side. Or or, you know, drainage ability on either side, right? And you had fifty feet of frontage to fit that on owned land. Is that realistically constrain anything that would happen in the downtown compared to having fifteen feet of frontage?
If it doesn't, do we accomplish anything though by making it more restrictive?
It's still pretty lenient.
I mean, the majority.
But if, but if we're not gaining something, there's a particular reason to.
Are we losing anything?
I mean, I don't think we are fifteen feet, I mean, I, I don't think, I think as long as they can have a driveway permit. I think they're, they've got attic confront, just my view. Uh, so I don't think, I mean, pretty fair, I'm not, I don't necessarily need to define the number. If they have a safe access driveway access to their property, that's acceptable to me.
Well, you probably know better than anybody at the table. Uh, can the state deny someone a driveway permit if it's a pre-existing law? Or if they create, if someone creates a new lot? And they, and the state say you can't get the driveway permit?
I mean, are they asking for a new curb cut for a new use of like, what's the, what's the trigger for a driveway permit?
Yes, that's, yeah, I mean, that's, does it, can the state say no?
If it's, if they are doing something that triggers a driveway permit application that is subject to the review of the state. If they are changing a use, if they're adding a new curb cut or moving a curb cut or doing anything that triggers driveway permit review. Uh, then yeah, that is subject to their to their process at that point.
I'm just trying to think of. If someone created a bunch of small lots and they all wanted curb cuts.
That I think is the risk of the fifteen feet.
Yeah.
The risk of the fifteen feet is.
A lot of entrances.
Bunch of stacked curb cuts and and all sorts of additional and maybe unnecessary turning movements, turning conflicts. That that's, that's the, that's the downside of of that, I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the lot size relief is is the vast, the biggest thing here, right? You're not having a lot size requirement, you're not having even a unit requirement as long as. There's room, you have water and sewer available and um. If, when we get to the impervious coverage, right, if your building falls under whatever impervious coverage percentage is deemed. Um, and we have some examples to provide, but um, so I think if you meet those criteria. And it's pretty, pretty relief driven, I feel like, but um. And a fifty-foot for reference, I was looking, I pulled the map. I mean, a lot of the on Main Street, for example, right now, a lot of the lots down through there, um, sixty Main Street. Is fifty feet exactly, the breadth of that, like.
Yeah.
How it's that portion of the house, um, the first one there by Blacksmith Alley, so. I mean, you know, if you visualize it, fifty feet isn't that huge.
See, they're looking at them, uh, many of the lots would become unsubdividable. Because as I'm looking down Main Street, there's ninety-one feet, uh, ninety-one feet, seventy-three feet, seventy-two feet. Um, ninety-nine feet, they would get a survey, uh, no, it's not favorable. Ninety feet, fifty feet, thirty-six feet, seventy-seven feet. Um, hundred eight feet, they could, uh, fifty feet, thirty-five feet, thirty-five feet, sixty-six, seventy-four. Um, eighty-five, so all the ones less than a hundred would be unsubdivenable at fifty feet.
So. That's. The other side of that is fifty feet seems largely congruent. If not even slightly more lenient than what exists today. So if 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 you want to see more of what exists today in in Enfield Village. That's, you know, kind of at the scope and scale of, you know, what exists today, that fifty feet is probably generally in line. Uh, if not even slightly more lenient in most cases.
And all of the, and it's also in the downtown portion would also include Flanders Street. And Flanders frontages are um a hundred to two ninety-five. Two twenty-seven, so those are all subdivisible back in there, um, where you could get a little more density.
And that's probably the, you know, in the downtown, that's probably the most quote unquote subdivitable area. So this would be, this would be, even fifty feet would be an upzoning for a lot of, you know, that that area.
Um, and then we get into some of the setback reliefs as well, um, you know, we went pretty minimal on that too to kind of again. Create, you know, maybe there's no setback relief, but, I mean, no setback set, but I think people are used to having something. And again, when we're looking at this, if this is all being proposed, um, you know, Tim and I were talking about it and it's like, it's, it's great to be like. Yes, as much relief as possible, but then also like remembering that, um, if this is all being proposed, if there's. You know, the risk of too much like that people are nervous about, does it all get voted down and nothing passes? So trying to kind of play that a little bit of like, okay, what is relief and what, again, what is congruent with what's current condition and or some relief given? So um, front to ten, sides to ten and rear to ten with also kind of um. A little bit of more um flexibility in that, you know, if it's a driveway or storage shed. You could go down even to like potentially five feet, right? So that again, your accessory is able to be a little closer, but your primary is still within kind of a normal setback range.
Can I, can I awesome other idea?
Yeah, absolutely.
Could we, you know, okay, so flexibility on on the side setbacks. I'm all about the flexibility on the side setbacks in the downtown area.
Hmm.
What about zero on Main Street, at least allowing that, connected buildings on Main Street? You could limit it just to Main Street.
Yeah, you could, yeah.
Why, you know, why would we want to preclude buildings if if there was a redevelopment in, you know? If if buildings are be connected, that's the place where they would be connected, that is on Main Street.
Ability for the fire department.
Right, I think Nate's correct here, I mean, ma- many, many municipalities.
Right.
And any anytime this happened would be a new building.
Yeah.
Right. With new fire, you know, new construction, modify codes.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think Nate's wrong, I think that's, I think this case is.
We couldn't, we could do connected buildings.
And right, yeah, common wall, yeah, and it's a very common construction method, even the upper valley.
Townhouses.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, right, I mean, it's, um. Two thoughts on that, one was a lot of the mains, main, a lot of the small towns that I've been going through on my summer travels. We go through the, down the Main Street and it looks very similar to sort of like what Hanover is. Um. Or even more, even more than that, even, it's really, there isn't one around here in the, in the hemisphere I can think of. But it's basically both sides of the road are just rows of buildings, but they're all separate buildings, they're all painted differently, different brick colors.
Yeah.
Different architects, it's all different architects, but they're all have shared.
Yeah.
And I'm assuming it's a firewall, I'm already.
Firewall between.
I was thinking of losing downtown uh some point, but it would just, you know, the thing was.
Yeah.
On, if there's a gap, say, uh, required setback between buildings. Um, the minimum has to be the, what the fire codes are, which are just either based on. Um, just what it has must meet fire code requirements for, and I've talked to, I don't know, it wasn't this. Building inspector, the previous one, and he said it has a lot to do with the type of structure and where it's located. And what's the distances, um, if there's gonna be an air gap, how big it has to be. Otherwise, it has to be a firewall.
Right.
Type of a construction.
You, you don't want three feet between buildings.
Yeah.
Because that would be really hard in a fire situation.
Right, right, it's gonna jump immediately.
Yeah.
Building be connected.
Yeah.
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 But, um, yeah, yeah, there's just language on meeting either building, building codes, fire codes. Um, type of situation.
And you asterisk, I didn't purge um the five foot of storage shed driveway, I would include parking there. Lots have parking within five feet of them, remind already.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Then you're gonna run into, then we're, we're running into what we just talked about, which was frontage. If you've got connected buildings and they're separate lots.
Hmm.
They're not gonna be fifty feet wide. Yeah, they might be.
They could be.
They could be.
Yeah, but.
They could be owned by the same, with the same parcel and lease.
They'd then become, they'd be, yeah, fifty feet wide, they're gonna be duplexes.
Well, they're.
Or they're townhouses.
Well, you don't have separate buildings the way Nate's describing them unless you have separate owners, which you're not gonna have unless they're on separate lots.
Right.
So.
And I'm only proposing zero on Main Street.
Oh, yeah, oh, I agree.
In all likelihood, if something happens on Main Street or is developed on Main Street, it's going to be on a certain scope and scale that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I mean.
Oh, well, are you talking Main Street or you're talking the downtown?
Right, you're gonna define when, how far, all of Main Street from.
No, 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 I'm bigger than that, I'm saying, are we talking the downtown district or are we talking Main Street?
For zero setbacks, I would envision just Main Street within the downtown district and the rest of the downtown district being ten.
Okay.
From Hughes Park all the way to Shaker Bridge?
Yeah.
The purple, Main Street in the purple.
Yep.
If anything's happening, there's gotta be redevelopment.
A purple doesn't go to the bridge.
Yeah, but whatever purple is on the map there.
Goes to the underpass, basically, yeah.
Mm hmm.
No, it goes to.
Just to.
Just to the, what's the road there, um.
Oak Grove Cemetery.
No, it goes to Oak Grove Cemetery.
Oh, that's where I would.
That's where, yeah, they're right.
As we, yeah.
From Shaker Hill to Oak Grove.
No, they say all Main Street.
All Main Street, all the way from Route four.
Just delete the one.
Yes.
Leave our is residential and that will say. I mean, that's just an idea.
I think that's a good idea, um, the one thing, um, so would, uh, so last week also impervious came up, um, lot coverage. Impervious versus pervious and doing a percentage based on lot size, maybe not lot sizes, but lot, you know, dense, um, sorry, coverage, basically. Um, can you advance that? I've got a couple samples, so we, that was one of the topics that came up next in here. So looking at Lebanon, uh, we looked at a couple of them, so Lebanon does building coverage. Um, the percentage of the lot area covered by buildings only. So it did not include, at least in the section that we were looking at, I was looking at, I could not find me saying, but the definition is buildings. Um, principal and accessory shall be included. Um, and their general R two is twenty-five percent, which is quite, that's like you can only cover twenty-five percent of your left. Um, in the R two, however.
That's a half acre building.
Right. Yeah, which is basically like, like a.
That's humongous.
What's the target in West Lebanon, that's thirty thousand square feet. So a half acre building is about almost that, you know, approaching that size, yeah.
So the um, pattern lay, pattern overlay district, um, however, does differentiate and does sixty percent by right. With an option to go sixty to eighty percent um, coverage by special exception again, pattern, because you're creating those flag lots or back lots of smaller sized lots. So realizing that hopefully, you know, you're gonna create the smaller lots, um, and need to be able to build something. So that was Lebanon, if you want to advance the next one, please, thank you. Centipede, um, was the other one who is also at Lakefront, I know last week came up too, that we see this often in um the shoreline or shoreline overlay districts. Um, so Centipede defines their coverage um, as occupied by a structural or improvement other than landscaping. Thereby including parking, driveways, tennis courts and the like, um, which is, you know, im- impervious. Um, typically, so makes sense to include that. Um, and then they have their shoreline overlay district, um, which again, as I mentioned, you might go. When you look later down the road at your lake, you may go a different percentage for there. Um, so they have in their um table of dimensions, sixty percent um, in their residential and eighty percent in mixed use slash commercial areas, so kind of just focusing in on what we're looking at for Enfield. Those matched up, they did have a different percentage, obviously, for their um shoreline. And I think there was one more, if you want to advance that. New London, um, which also only appear in the shoreline, um, and there's a little more, kind of, uh, has a little more of us to it, but um. Also, same thing as Centipede, the roofs, the decks, patios, paved gravel or crushed stone driveways and kind of finds it a little more. Um, to that, so just kind of keeping that in the back of your head too, as we go through these discussions, like, does this come up as like a, a topic that we, that wants to be added in potentially? Or um, you know, discussed further, so I think would it make sense for the downtown, again, to have the most relief and not have any requirement of, or the least requirement of in um, of pervious? Um, on Main Street, if, I, again, I think the zero setback, that makes sense and could be a great um, tool to have in the toolbox for that downtown Main Street, so then obviously I, in my head, I just went to, okay, so this wouldn't apply to that, that zone. So. Um, but elsewhere, as we talk through some of these other ones, uh, just kind of think of that and think of what's, and again, sixty to eighty percent is kind of been the like sweet spot that we've seen. Um. Again, this is New London and mostly in their shoreline, so again, that might be something to look at when you look at um, closer to the lake for property, for properties. Um.
Now, in the downtown area.
Hmm.
At least one side of the north side of Main Street, you've got the river.
Hmm.
So there's the required setback where there would be no impervious.
Right.
Surface.
The buffer, yeah.
So do we include that buffer in our calculation? Or do we say that's not included in the sixty percent or whatever the calculation is?
Um. I think typically it is included in the calculation, so like if the lot is. Um, maybe it's been done both ways, I'd say that.
It's gotta.
Well, it's gonna be included.
That's pervious.
I'm saying it. How, how could you conclude it, you wouldn't be able to put anything.
You're buildable.
All of those, all of those. Their setback is the back of the building.
Excluded from the calculations, like you want to cluster developments.
Right.
You can't use your wetlands as part of your, but type open space, not buildable open space.
Right, but you are, yeah, the problem is you wouldn't be able to build anything.
But, you know, in in terms of redevelopment, which someday it's gonna happen.
Right.
Um, we, we ought to define it now, I think.
Or, or we can just scratch that line from the downtown section. I mean, if you want to maximize your, your stuff in downtown, but then you're restricting what they can put there with, by physical size.
Hmm.
And you already, in the river, by default, there's a fifty foot setback.
Right.
Yeah, you could just leave it as is today.
And it's a part of my lot.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I can see impervious, especially around the lakes, when we get involved in that set.
Yeah.
Involved in that, but the downtown and village area, where you want the denser stuff.
Not village, downtown.
Downtown.
Downtown and field village, so you're, you're including the light green?
Yeah.
And potentially not having a pervious or impervious.
Right, I mean, right, I mean, even, well, you know, maybe, maybe in the, in the, uh, the EV, in the Enfield Village. Light green, excuse me, uh, section, you have some kind of lot coverage thing, but not, but not the downtown.
But not the downtown.
Yeah.
So we're still focused on downtown right now, right? We haven't checked.
That's one.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I was just thinking of the downtown area, having that kind of restriction and just goes against everything else that we've been discussing.
Oh, yeah, because Main Street has its own one where the river is there.
Right.
You, by its, by its nature.
Yeah. Yeah, we'd give that backside buffer.
Yeah, it would existing.
So we keep that, we keep the setback to the river.
Right, well, yeah.
Right, we just wouldn't apply the potential new.
Right, that's the fact of the matter is townwide.
Right. Because they're gonna have to park someplace.
Right.
Yeah.
If they got. So then the, the real the limitations, so to speak, on what could happen downtown are then basically the river and building height.
Yeah.
Essentially.
Hmm, yeah.
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 It's kind of almost semi-form based, but.
Yeah.
Like, that's the form aspect, very, yeah.
Yeah.
I do think downtown, we should go to forty-five feet instead of forty, because that matches some of the buildings that are already there.
What's?
Especially.
What's four stories?
Uh, yeah, well, Whitney Hall.
Right, yeah.
Copland Block.
Yeah, right, so what's that in height, though?
Uh, I'd have to pull up, because it was, it was, it was in the forty, but the other thing we've heard is people want pitched roofs. And so if you stick to forty, we will get flat roofs.
Hitched roofs downtown.
Yeah, people have, I mean, that's what people have said.
Um, I've always heard that in Route Four.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I believe we've been.
Yeah.
No, I, I'm not arguing whether that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that is something that we have heard.
Right.
Uh, and in order to do that, you need a little bit of more flexibility on your, your height.
I, it used to be back in the, the old days in Philadelphia, nothing could be higher than William Penn.
Right.
Right, that, that was the, that was the height restriction in Philadelphia.
Oh, yeah.
What if the Copland Block is the height restriction downtown? That's, that's as high as you can build.
Not sure that's the tallest building.
Is it not? Is Whitney Hall?
I think it's Whitney Hall.
Whitney Hall is taller.
Yeah, with the couple of ones up, it probably is.
Hmm.
But we exempt cupolas and steeple and from the height requirement, don't we?
I'm just talking to the roof of the.
Yeah, ridge line of the roof.
So.
The peak of the roof.
Whatever, whatever Whitney Hall or Copland Block is height wise, if it's fifty feet or somewhere thereabouts. The top of that, that building becomes the.
Get a question.
Then you could build four stories.
And we're measuring from.
I was gonna say, from the street or from the lowest grade?
Four, four story buildings need more than forty feet.
Right, fifty, I mean.
Yeah, but as written here is forty, that's why I'm suggesting we go up from the forty that they've got proposed.
Does it say four stories here?
No.
No, it's.
The height says forty feet.
I mean, that's my general thought process, if, if Open Block and Whitney Hall are in the four story range, that's probably fifty foot high.
Yeah.
That seems like the, the, the ceiling.
I agree, I, yeah, we're agreeing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, I think that we want to allow that kind of building.
By right.
Yeah.
If they want to go higher, they're gonna get a.
Yeah.
Probably.
But what grade did that start?
What's that?
What grade, the, the front or the?
The lowest grade or the street?
So, that's in the front. We currently do it from the front, but.
Right.
When people think about the height of the building, right, if you're looking at Whitney Hall, it gives you how tall is it? They necessarily measure right from the front.
Yeah.
There, there's a difference between the, what we have written in and what people think of.
Right, right.
I mean, firefight, we've seen some like Centipede, for example, that there's, you know, in beast with firefighting, like where's the lowest grade, like stuff like that, so just wondering, and I pulled up um, Tim's um, report that he did.
Yeah.
On the Copland Block, um, four stories. Uh, total building height is forty-four to forty-six feet is what he has.
Yeah.
On the side, so fifty feet would get you, yeah.
Yeah.
Hmm, yeah.
And if you look, think of most attracts that, the four story building.
Yes, and fifty feet isn't enough to get a five story building, it's a four story.
Right.
Yeah.
Four stories are fifty feet, not to exceed fifty feet.
Right, right.
Define the number of floors.
Yeah, they're, well, somebody can build, wants to go, building codes are in front of that.
Right.
We don't have to get involved.
Um. Anything else on downtown? Um, I did add back in, we add back in the language, notice that, that. Confirmed, but multifamily dwellings consisting as of current day, of three or more dwelling units require site plan approval by the planning board. I imagine you'd want to keep that in there.
Yeah, multifamily should.
Yeah, um, and then.
Five, but martial sized, let people go before class, by the way.
Trying to think, typically, we always say three or more go to site plan, but I'm trying to think if that's a.
Right.
That uh, fire marshal thing, which we, the statute did change that they don't have to have.
Well, the fire marshal is your site plan.
Right.
I mean, you obviously.
But we define what.
Yeah.
Yeah, what's the objective to site plan review?
Right.
Right.
So.
Well, the other place that three comes in is, it's more than three units. The planning board can ask for design review. By the way, the target, small format target is forty thousand square feet, I was, I was a little low on my estimate, I, I thought it was in the thirty range, forty thousand, so it's closer to.
Close to an acre.
Closer to an acre, the small format.
Oh, yeah, as I'm doing that, we were looking at, Trader Joe's is very small, so you could get Trader Joe's in, too. Okay, so do you want to move it to four or keep it at three?
Well, I, I'm saying draw a line at five, to still allow it to the, because that's where all the like a personal, right, their personal residence in a four unit or less, and all that is commercial.
Are you proposing that just for the downtown area?
I, I'd propose that anywhere.
But I think it's worth, I think it's worth having some level of site plan review, three plus in other districts.
Hmm. What value do we get?
Uh, I think it opens the door to design review.
What value do we get out of that?
Depends, but I, you know, I think we're getting good value out of it under, for certain things going on right now, you know.
Well, that is certainly.
Well, if you like, for any site plan review, you have to ask the questions and your butters get to weigh in and red flags make him up.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, if it's. I mean, it doesn't seem to be a problem currently with what we've been doing.
But you don't know if it's a problem, because nobody's coming with anything.
It, it, it adds thousands of dollars to a person's.
Right.
Um, project.
As owners.
And, and it adds months to the schedule.
You're proposing five as the.
I, I, right, because that's the commercial, that's the difference between residential and commercial. Like, if you go to the bank for a loan and you say, I've got four units, you get a, you know, a residential loan, if you say, I've got five units, you have to get a commercial loan.
Right.
And so that's sort of the dividing line between residential, you know, just primary residence and commercial activity.
So this board would not review anything under five in any.
Correct, four, four, three, two or one.
So then, is there a value in the process of a four unit development in Enfield Village District coming to this board for review and, and thereby notifying the butters and giving them a voice and et cetera? Is that, I don't know, I, I, I could go all the way on it, you know, it, it's, it's.
Do you want to encourage or discourage that kind of development? I mean, from a, from a.
That's really the question you're asking.
Right. Yeah, because from a, from a construction standpoint, right, they can already build any size building they want. If somebody wants to build, you know, a twenty thousand square foot, single family home, they can do that. But if they want to build four, one thousand square foot apartments, they can't by right with simply a building permit. And they still have to meet all the rules and regulations.
Well, I guess it's, it's a, almost like a courtesy to the butters because you're adding more traffic. Because it's going to be apartments. Um. It's, it's not a single family home, so you're gonna have just, I think that's sort of the thought process being why you do the site plan.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I don't see value in adding thousands of dollars and months to a person's schedule.
Well, again, I think you have to ask the question, are we gonna encourage this kind of development or are we gonna discourage it? We're gonna discourage it, then make them come to the planning board, if you're gonna encourage it, then allow them to work by right.
Yeah. And I would encourage it, just, I mean, that's both historically and definitely now, that's a big part of how people are able to go forward housing.
Yeah.
Is by having a rental unit or two.
However. One of the things that we like about Enfield is its charming streets and houses. And if people are going to take an old house and redevelop the lot. I would rather see them do something that is in line with the properties that are in the neighborhood. I mean, a carriage house becomes a unit or an L does, instead of just adding three more.
But, but currently.
Houses.
Currently, they can't even do that without site plan review if they want three units.
Right.
I don't think that's bad.
So, but I think you want to encourage that behavior.
Have, it has going through this process yourself made you aware of this, more aware of this?
Yeah.
I mean, I haven't, so maybe that's why I'm not seeing it that way.
Yeah, no, it's thousands of dollars and months of schedule.
But you've chosen to do something attractive.
Making it ugly would not have changed. No, no.
But it would have, um, perhaps been a benefit for your butters to weigh in on it.
Um, well, they had that opportunity.
Yeah, no.
Uh, you know.
I I just would like to see somewhere along we think about. Preservation of the things we value here. And I I don't, I don't hear that.
So the site plan review doesn't. Have anything to do with what it ends up looking like. I think that's the, that's part of it too, is it doesn't like, you know? And it, to my mind, discourages the reuse of old buildings because you're basically, if all you want to do is get a building permit, you're limited to two units.
Well, if we're worried about aesthetics, why do we allow two units or three units or, you know, what's the?
No, it's no, it's right. We don't control the aesthetics of the building.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So I don't think.
We control where the parking, how much parking, where it's going to go, curb carts. Um. And.
Which is still under the. When you start to follow the rules.
Right.
It's just that those are done through the, you know, the building.
Houses.
Down process. You know, you still have to get a building permit, you still have to do all that stuff, you still have to follow all the rules.
Does the building permit indicate that you have to have X amount of parking? Well, I guess if it's zoning.
It would be zoning, so you would, yeah, so it would, yes.
Yeah, it just.
That was actually one of my questions.
You have to pin it on the lot somehow. So, yeah.
Mm hmm.
So the key to answer, Linda, is there's other rules and regulations in place. Even after the structure is constructed, that will control those factors that you would be in fear of going off control. So I think, you know, in that case, having the 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 structure there and then having those rules and regulations guarding against junk cars, uh, you know, the noise. All of our ordinances, I think, will accommodate that to encourage development.
I mean, not necessarily what it looks like.
Correct.
Yeah, but that that is. You know, not.
It will not, but again, you have to give some leeway to the to the person's building.
Oh, good.
You know?
What what if we established in our regulations? A technical review committee, which would review two, three, and four unit developments?
No.
No, no. They don't have enough time in work for that.
I'm in here, five by right.
Four by right.
Hmm.
Up to five by right.
Up to five by right.
Commercial, you mean not?
It becomes commercial because it's five, it is commercial, you know?
Oh.
What if? That's the area. Where we are trying to encourage, right?
Which area?
Better.
The entire thing?
On the on the whiteboard, the the.
Everything shaded in.
Everything shaded in.
Yeah.
What if site plan review got triggered at five or higher for that area, but three or higher?
Yeah.
For the rest of the town.
So I I was, that's just gonna say that because.
So with with what we've talked about, that would be the case because we're telling everybody we're only changing this area.
Right.
So it would, there would be a difference.
Get there, we'll argue about it later, but I agree with you for this year.
Right.
Yeah, I think, yeah, again, yeah, if if you're putting it to ballot as these three, then I was just gonna say that, that these three would be. Written as five or more, and then the rest of your land would still have the three or more. So.
Okay.
It could.
The the rest of the town is a much more rural context without the without. Utilities and services and 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 parks and and.
Right, right, yeah.
You know, the the, you know, uh, multi-family proposed development in 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 more rural parts of the community, I think, is is appropriate to have. A butter notification and and a and a reasonable site plan review process even at three units. But here. Uh, you know, in the in the downtown area. Um, given all of our efforts and given the existence of infrastructure, which doesn't exist in the rest of the community.
Right.
I think it might make sense to have. Potentially, you know, go that route for these three new districts. This is all about the fact that infrastructure exists.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah, which which is actually what would prevent people from doing. Even if they were allowed to.
Yeah.
Building a big enough septic for ten, twelve bedrooms. From a space standpoint. Getting pretty on a homeowner.
Mm hmm.
Okay, five or more. In all those, in all three of the new districts. Yeah. And the impervious we're taking out of the downtown. There's no. Um. Yeah, things that. Any other questions, comments for downtown?
Why are you taking impervious out of downtown?
Um, so it would just remain that the existing with the wetland buffer that exists today would still be required. But so. Last week, um, the impervious lock coverage area came up as to including that potentially in some of the new drafting. Um, but it doesn't exist today. And I think. Uh, given the downtown and the density and this landscape, if you're having the wetland buffer. Would follow today is still suit, I think, would give you more of that flexibility. Um, imposing the impervious in the downtown would be a restriction. So. I don't think that, you know, again, it's conversation for the board, but I don't think that it's a. It it becomes a little prohibitive in the downtown if you acquire percentage of impervious area and you're locked. Um, so.
Because if the Copeland block burned down, it would make it an unbuildable lot if there was.
I am no.
Probably is an unbuildable lot, actually.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd stop right up to the river.
Funny.
Right.
But just. Yeah, you would end up having, uh.
Eighty feet of dead space.
Yeah, right, right. That would just be dirt and gravel.
Right.
Because nothing's going to grow there because we won't get enough light and water anyways.
Right.
Um, now it's.
It's parking. Yeah, it'd be parking.
Well, parking's pervious, so that's. Um, parking's impervious, so that even wouldn't work. So, yeah.
Which was the town?
Yeah.
All right, so moving on.
Cut off on the one of the four to five units, it's a good cutoff point because it does change commercial.
Right.
I like that.
And feel.
I like the skyscraper.
Yeah, I like that. Have to have some fun with it. So, yeah, those are just some currents, again, a current and then the other surrounding towns that I've kind of pulled from.
Yeah.
But, um, again, I think the downtown, that makes sense and kind of, like I said, they kind of form base it and go off of what your highest point is currently and. Want to see there. Um, so fifty feet on Main Street. Uh. Actually, wait, no, everywhere.
Everywhere.
Everywhere in downtown, fifty beach. And then it's just the, uh. Side. Everywhere else is ten feet with downtown being zero. Would rear, did, does that coincide with rear too, or would you want a rear setback?
You've got the river, well, only on the side.
On all of this.
That rail trail on the other side.
Yeah.
Do you have a natural?
Well, I mean, there's also other streets too, it's.
Right, but do we, yeah.
Right.
So right now I have an addendum to the side setbacks as ten for downtown, Main Street being zero side. What's your uh thoughts on rear in downtown?
I'm okay with what you have here.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, I don't see visual, I don't see how the rear is any different than the side.
Right.
Um, I mean, road frontage because of the road issues, but rear and back, so like to me, it's all the same. So, I mean, what's?
Right. Rear and back.
We have two lots and the, you know, a budding in the back end.
Of course, it's catch what for rare and.
I'm inside, I mean, you have a lot on the side.
I know, I know what you mean.
You have a budding lot on the back side.
Right.
And a budding lot on the on, you know, off the right side, what's the difference?
Right.
Um.
And driveway and storage shed and parking could be five feet from the rear as well.
Sure.
So to encourage again, maybe more going behind the buildings rather than in the front.
Yeah.
Um, so you have your buildings on your walkable downtown. All right, so that's check, leave that as is.
Root four, four yard is required.
Do we want to go to Enfield Village or do you want to go to Route four?
I'm looking at Route four, like front yard is required.
Well, what's that?
It's Enfield Village.
Enfield Village, okay.
Yeah, yeah, more the way out.
Um, on that back on the proposed, they're all on that same uh table. Yes, so Enfield Village is in the middle right there.
Yep.
Um, all right, so, but on lot size, um. Right now you have, again, the one acre and a quarter if water and sewer.
Mm hmm.
Um, so we need to give relief there, quarter acre if water and sewer and a half if not, or I, yeah, transpose those, but half if not and a quarter. Um, if water and sewer. The addition also being that, um. That's known lot size, but then comes into play the additional acreage per dwelling unit. So if you wanted those four units. Um. And this, again, the team, we kind of went back and forth on this, and so this is obviously for discussion too. Um, so say you want four units. You would not need any additional requirement on a quarter acre. However, once you pick over to the five, um, you would need an eighth of an acre more. Or again, up for discussion. This is just kind of, again, we kicked this around a bit.
That results in a ten unit per acre density. Four on a quarter acre. Six one eighth acres being three quarters of an acre, so six plus four is ten units.
So or they just subdivide into four quarter acres and do.
Right.
Sixteen. But there are many one acre lots.
Right.
Well, actually, not on on sewer.
Right, this is if on water and sewer.
What were the objections to, um, not having a minimum lot size and using the, uh. Impervious surface as a way of limiting what people can do?
I think that gets really tricky, um. Because it's what comes first, the chicken or the egg?
Right.
Um, when, you know, I think there's. Is it somebody subdividing off and giving to their child and they know the lot and that kind of stuff, and it's obviously created, or is it a developer coming in and saying, I'm just going to buy this ten acre and boop, 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 boop?
Right.
But then sell it, and then the owner buys it and goes, wait, what? I could only build so much, or like, I guess. Creating a lot by an envelope size. Um. I don't know, again, up for more discussion.
I guess I guess I don't see this application, you know? If somebody can meet all the requirements with a lot size and it's deemed to be buildable during the subdivision process. Somebody who's going to buy that lot would know what those limits are when they purchase it.
So you're, so you could go down potentially to a tenth of an acre in the Enfield Village. I think where you get into that, again, the conversation is like, it's, that's a really big change from what's current existing. And again, I'm not saying that it's not, you know, needing to go that way. I think, again, just thinking on the planning and on the kind of incremental side, um. And when proposing it, um, for public kind of to. To look at and see what's different existing conditions today. You have a lot of lots that are already, um, multi-units on a quarter acre. Um, so. And or less than that even in some parts of EV. So. It's not super unfamiliar. I think going, I think the team was kind of like, it's going to just impervious. Again, it's. How do you calculate that? Again, you could, yeah, you could make it any lot size, um. But then you also lose some uniformity, again, kind of going back to what existing conditions are. And and not that you can go smaller in the future or looking at it again later, but I think it's that chiseling effect to like chip away. Chip at it a little bit, um. But again, open to more conversation.
I guess I I disagree with the chip away there, but the idea is to get zoned out or not. I don't think people are going to redo this in the next ten years. At least I was kind of hope.
Right.
Hope that would be the case.
Right.
Um. And just just for, just for some perspective, as I was thinking through, I I had told you with the last meeting that I had done a just a quick little.
Yeah.
Eighth of an acre lot, right? I remember to bring it in.
Okay.
And so this is just a fifty by one hundred lot, so it's, uh, two feet per square. Um, and just sort of shows an example of a simple, you know, home and garage on there. And it meets, and if that's what somebody did, the driveway, the garage, a little walkway in a house, twenty-four by thirty-two house. Um, which would be about, if it was two stories, about fifteen hundred square foot house, um, thirty-seven percent of the lot.
Right.
Just, just sort of an example of what can be done on an acre of an acre.
I think the other thing, so with that, um, sorry, I forgot to mention this, so. Enfield Village as a whole, looking at it kind of again holistically, but it did come up in our review and in conversation, team, that. There, you know, the cluster subdivision ordinance is a little lacking on giving flexibility, um, and there is no planned unit development ordinance. So the Wood, Woodbury comments?
Woodland, Wood, in London, Derry?
Uh, no, sorry, the proposed potential new one coming in here, that's going to be in the Enfield. Enfield Village.
We got the picture.
Confused with.
Yeah.
Comments.
No, no, I got a picture.
I think is it Woodbury, is that?
It's Woodbury.
It's Woodbury Farm.
Woodbury Farms, thank you, yes, this. So in looking, the team kind of looked at this too and was like, this is a really cool potential project that's coming in TV, so this is a really great conceptual to consider. Um, and that cannot exist today.
Right.
It there, it's even with, um, so and with that being said, this, you know, proposed quarter acre. And one eighth acre additional unit, et cetera, um, still doesn't give enough relief for that kind of creation, but that creation is. Great, and I think would fit, we think would fit really well in the EV. So that being said, um, I think there's definitely some room, and we would recommend a cluster development redo or a planned unit development. We're forward of relief in the Enfield Village to establish this, but, um, it would have a little more parameters and give that relief. And kind of have an overlay district in the Enfield Village. So you could still achieve it. Um, it would just be.
What what additional parameters would justify the additional layer of bureaucracy? And why do we need a separate layer to allow that?
Well, the planned unit development also has a little bit more with the commercial and mixed use, and that has, um. The kind of bakery component of it, um, and gets it smaller. I mean, it's up for discussion, but that was one thing that. The team had kind of noted was like a planned unit development overlay would be highly beneficial for the Enfield Village.
We don't have time to deal with that this year. Unless you have a cotton paste on something.
I mean, most of them.
I mean, if we want to allow by right, why not just allow zoning that allows it rather than make a separate.
Need.
Yeah, a separate set of regulations.
Yeah.
I think also just, and it just is the appetite of how dense you want Enfield Village. To be.
Yeah, I mean, it's. You gotta be careful there because if we.
Yeah.
If we go too dense and allow too much stuff that's new, the whole thing gets shot down because there's enough people living there that could tip the balance of the boat. If they don't like it.
I I think there's a balance here that we have to strike. I mean, there's an obvious opportunity. To upzone for the purpose of housing. The EV. However, you know, I think when we were at the, at least at my table, at the at the public meeting. There is an expectation that that is going to continue to.
Right.
Be at, you know, a a scope and scale that feels like Enfield.
Right.
You know, and and that's not to say that you, you know, you can't upzone it and still have it be at a scope and scale, but there is a balance and and we're, we have to be cognizant of maybe not going too far.
Right.
Uh, because you're right.
They weren't looking for big changes.
Yes, they they, I think there's a willingness to consider upzoning the area as long as. Still feels like Enfield's village.
Right, right, I mean.
Feel like something different.
Right, I mean, the downtown.
The Upper Valley has is Mount Support Road. Everybody looks at that and says, see what happened? Everybody looks at that and says, see what happened there? We don't want that happening where we am.
Right, right, I mean, I think people will accept, you know, willingly accept the downtown density that we're proposing. Cause they see it as a commercial area and multifamily apartments is they view as commercial. You start getting out into these residential neighborhoods, they're gonna be like, no, I don't want that next to me. If you get too dense. And too many large apartments complexes that look like a large apartment complex. Not the old farmhouse with multiple units that the exterior never changed, but a new structure that looks like a box with a lot of windows. And then. You, you could lose the whole vote. That's my concern.
You're not going to get, you're not gonna be able to build that if you have a small lot with. A restriction on the amount of impervious surface and a height limit. You can't build a huge building. If you have a height limit and you have.
But if.
Let's look at the Woodbury Farm proposal, which is on how many acres? I wanna say, somewhere I wanna say like Winky.
About twenty acres, yeah.
Yeah, there are some good sized lots. And even at a, you know, a fairly restrictive. If you went impervious service or whatever, you know, floor area ratio, whatever, whatever metric you wanted to govern that by. This big lot still can allow, even under that, that, that framework.
Seventeen point one acres.
So, so where, where is this?
It's Phil the mayor's whole property, his whole bit. Phil's farm.
On what road?
Main Street.
I'm behind the cemetery or down.
He wanted to put the solar.
You know, just solar arrays. We got blasted.
A Tupper's place.
Solar arrays, people are looking for a place to live, so I think they might be a little bit more lenient than they will.
What threw me off was the Blue Moon Bakery in New London.
They're likening it after that of having a bakery, they likened it to the quintessential.
Oh, so Phil sold the fields in the back? I missed that.
We need to get back to.
Yeah, so, um, I think, yeah, I, I think there's a, to Nate's point, I think there's a balance to strike. Um, and I think the impervious, I mean, I think it just depends, if you're saying, you know, you can go down to a tenth acre. But will people do that automatically? Or will they still say, I want four acres and now I can have a pervious area of sixty percent on four acres of land? Like, does it really get you the smaller?
It allows property owners flexibility. And so the scenario that you put forth of trying to subdivide to build, you know, for the kids to build a house next to. You know, it would allow that to happen. And a big developer's not gonna want to do that. But the small residential homeowner might want to do that. So when you prevent small scale things, to my mind, it actually hurts the small homeowner more than it hurts the big developer. Because it means, because if you have to have a large lot, you have to have more money.
And so just to kind of using the Thelma more, so. The, the family, you know, what we see typically happening to her now is like the family or the, the relative or the, you know, friend kind of needing a space. The ADUs or conversions um.
So does a lot for that.
So. I'm just, so but you're saying sellable land, so then you're, you're taking a land.
Potential subdivision for new lots, the existing lots already exist.
Right, right, it's just, right, but it's like, it's how much of the pie do you wanna slice? Right, I guess.
But I think, I think unless we go to smaller than a quarter acre, we're not providing any relief to what's there today. So, and I'd, I'd go at least down to a tenth or an eighth of acre, and I think. People can do that very well.
You are, cause you requiring right now one acre.
No, quarter acre in Enfield, in the Enfield Village area where you have water. Which is the majority of it.
It is, yeah.
We allow quarter acre.
But you, now you're allowing quarter acre and four units.
Yep, but I would even, but and again, somebody's not gonna actually be able to build, if you have a, I like the idea of using the limits of the land itself. To provide your restrictions. You're not, if you have an impervious surface, then you're not going to be able to build four units on an eighth of acre. Or if you do, they'll be really small units.
So can you build, is this, what, so this map out?
It's just an example. Just, just for people to think, you know, an example.
But to, but then what does that?
That's roughly a third, an eighth of an acre, fifty by, fifty foot by a hundred foot is roughly an eighth of acre.
And then to calculate what's impervious on here versus pervious, when this hit the sixty percent?
No, this is thirty-seven percent. So I did the driveway, the garage, uh, you know, a lockway in the house. And just.
Is thirty-seven percent of a lot.
Thirty-seven percent is pervious.
Is impervious.
Oh, impervious.
So the driveway, plus the garage, plus the little.
So you're within the realm.
Just an example, and again, this is just, you know, an illustrative example to think about, not.
I mean, problem I have with doing stuff like this is that this is the ideal lot. Nice and rectangular. Enfield doesn't have many nice rectangular lots, they have a lot of friends in them.
They'll have to prove it during subdivision.
Only if it's for. Well, subdivision, but if they just have, if they're just building on a pre-existing lot.
Then they can already do that, there's no change, right?
But you wanna. I'm, I guess I'm getting lost. Proposing.
I think I seriously, if there's an existing lot today that's vacant. And this passes and there's now an impervious requirement. That lot now falls subject to the new, when they go to build.
Yeah, I mean, this, the whole pervious limit. Works well for this example. But it becomes very, very different on larger vacant lots. Of which there are a number of them in the R one where that forty percent or whatever, whatever the. Becomes. All sorts of stuff that is way out of character with the rest of the.
Maybe needs to be lower for, for larger lots.
But there's no lot, there's no lot size. There's no max and there's no min.
Well, there's already no backs, there's never.
Why, right, but I'm saying to your point, to say that, that there's a requirement, then that, then yours, then that's a maximum.
Forty-five, you look like I gotta come here.
Right. But I'm saying is there, is if.
No, it's a good point.
Is there a maximum? Uh, again, I.
No, is it? No, is there a point where you switch and you reduce your impervious service allowed?
Cause it, we can have the same discussion, and that was one of my things about, about Route four in reading this is. The one thing that has been a constant for years about Route four is. We don't want Route twelve A, we're not looking for big box commercial development, you know, we, we want something that, you know, mixture of uses, something like Enfield, et cetera. There are some lots on, in the Route four district where that even, even at a restrictive, you know, impervious coverage is. You know, basically like. Facilitates that, right? And it's the one thing that, you know, has always been a constant in terms of public feedback is. We want Route four to look and function a certain way and we, and, and the way we want it to look and function is not like twelve A. But not to point figures at twelve A, twelve A serves a purpose, it's regional, you know, it's important. Yes, it is, i- 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 and, and, you know, I'm, I'm not casting aspersions at twelve A, twelve A is very important for the region, the fact that that all exists there. But in, you know, here, I, that has not been people's vision historically of Route four. And so, you know.
Except for the people that want a market basket.
Yeah, we don't want a boxcar, but we want, but we want a market basket.
So, but that said, I mean, these are, these are all good, we are two hours into this. I don't know how much longer we're gonna go this evening, because they, these are some big issues we need to kind of, I think we've made a lot of progress.
I, I'll, I'll suggest an eighth of an acre in the Enfield Village as the. Bring it up at the forum.
Minimum.
So as.
Minimum if on water and sewer. And if you're not, leave it at the half because of DES.
I wouldn't change the other one.
No, we don't need to fight DES.
And soil, I mean, the disclaimer is always half as long as also you're able to meet requirements.
Using the, the limits of the. Of the land. And all of them, well, with very, very exception, they have water, so they don't have to worry about like wellhead setbacks and stuff.
I don't think it's gonna be a problem, you go, you try that. Like, I just, I don't think people would vote for it, I think people are comfortable with the quarter acre, they voted for that.
Let's bring it up at the forum.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying, I, I just expect a lot of pushback.
And if we get a lot, we can, we can change.
We can go back to the quarter.
Well, you know, there, there are things that could be done in between a quarter and an eighth too, I mean, you know, even ten thousand square feet is. I mean, there, there, there are ways of kind of, you know. Doing it incrementally or something, still providing relief, moving in that direction, but maybe not. Being too much of a, you know.
Right, and if you're trying to use the argument that it's percentage of a pervious service only, people can conceptualize that.
It's really hard.
Yeah, because. And even enforcing that could be a nightmare, because people do things after the fact. And then what, and then what do you do? Dig it up? You know, it's like, really?
And like, and you know what counts towards impervious, um, again, I think our recommendation. Is not Lebanon building coverage, but more truly impervious, like tennis courts, decks, crushed stone, all of that. So having, putting, putting the onus on owners to calculate that can be challenging. Or, you know, again, having a reliance on a landscape architect to make sure that it is. There and compatible is another kind of fee sometimes.
Wants to put a work shot, not a full blown garage or just a. You know, a walk-in shed that they buy off a little valley or something. Now what do you, you know, and it's like, do I have to go out there and measure stuff to, just to do that? And because the neighbors complained?
I guess what's the, another thing that came up kind of, you know, we often think of impervious on. For stormwater management runoff to kind of ease that. Is that the, the point of it or is it just like the lot size creation?
Both.
Both. Another one that we had talked about too was, um, Lebanon has with their pattern overlay district, they had talked about it, I think, at the thing. And I thought it was really cool was a shade coverage requirement. Um, and. Requiring a percentage of the lot to still be shade covered, and so you're not clear cutting trees on a lot.
That's even harder.
That's hard to enforce.
Down the dead ash trees. I mean, that becomes a problem. After I get rid of forty-two of them.
So, just a thought, okay, just wanted to pop, to pop that up there as a mechanism that some towns are looking at.
They don't have the staff. To fight those hard battles.
Right, I think it's more pretty subdivision, that they're not going into land and. You know, what are they keeping and also again, stormwater management and, um, you know, heat retention.
The other suggestion I make for Enfield Village is, um, to extend the double asterisks. For storage, have driveways and parking into the setbacks as well.
When are we gonna? Take, pick up this discussion? Cause it's, it's, yeah, I mean, we're not, we're not gonna go all night here, but, you know, like, when is the? And I don't wanna sign myself up for more meetings. I was on the gas appearing circuit last week, you know, but, uh. We made good progress today, I think, I think we came to some consensus on most of the downtown, right? I think we have some stuff we still need to work through on the village and particularly on Route four. When, the clock is ticking.
When's our public hearing? Or forum scheduled for?
Was like in November eighth.
Does not give us a whole lot of time.
The twenty-second is gonna be full. We're, we're packed on the twenty-second. I tend to think that we need to have one more special meeting sometime between now and the forum. Cause we're not gonna be able to spend any time on this on the twenty-second.
There's five, there's five Wednesdays.
Which, which gives us. Gives us, well, the twenty-ninth is a fifth Wednesday and that is not something that we would normally. I don't wanna sign Rob up for more readings too.
Let's make it the trifecta, we'll just have one meeting every meeting. Oh, good, good. I thought there were only four Wednesdays in the month, but there's.
We'll do them next week off.
David?
We do, yeah, so either the fifteenth or the twenty-ninth would be the, the options. I don't know if people wanna be five weeks in a row. The fifteenth would require us beating five weeks in a row, which might be a little bit much for us, but the twenty-ninth. Probably is open for a lot of people, because it is a fifth Wednesday and there aren't a lot of standing meetings on a fifth Wednesday.
While we're out looking at calendars, um, November and December, let's look at the calendar for Thanksgiving and Christmas.
I think we've already decided that.
We're gonna do the first and third, so.
First and third.
Which means we're gonna.
For both of them?
So we're gonna have five minutes, five meetings in six weeks, Stan.
Oh, so the fifth would get us in before the, the eighth.
Yeah, but it'd be too late for them to get stopped for the presentation.
We're gonna go with the twenty-ninth.
The twenty-ninth is, is good, because it, it is a fifth Wednesday and that is largely probably open on the discount.
And it's a, it's more than a week before the forum, so if there's stuff we gotta get.
I would vote for the twenty-ninth.
I would agree.
I would too, because I'm gonna be in Connecticut. But I'll call you.
Um, so the twenty-ninth for a special meeting. Where we will continue.
Wrap this up for the four.
Enfield Village and Route four and figure out exactly what we're gonna. Throw out to the public at the forum and see what floats. And see what gets shot down.
I guess I would make one request, uh, the Route four is rather big. And, um, you know, in looking at it, are there things? That, like, two things that each of you can think about that you're like, this needs to change. This is not conducive or no, this, you know, we worked hard on when we drafted this a couple of years back to, that this needs to stay because of X, Y, Z. Because of public feedback, again, trying to give us a little more history on like, why things are the way they are and, and you and I can connect Rob too on some of that. But, um, I think. You know, trying to make it as simplistic as possible in relief, but then looking at it and going, there's a lot of like form based stuff in there too. And, you know, my aptitude is to leave that, um, but is there any question raised? So if you guys can think about that and jot off, you know, two or three things to send it to myself, if you have my email or to Rob and he can forward it, that would be fantastic. Um, to really kind of make sure that we try to pin this down as best as possible.
Like that by when? You have time to work with it.
Yeah, so meetings the twenty-ninth, uh, if you. Yeah, so meetings the twenty ninth, uh, if you can get that to us by. I mean, even by the, like, middle of, end of next week is fine. Uh. Yeah.
Wouldn't it be possible, Rob, to send us a reminder, maybe next week, like, hey, for those things? For those two ideas by the end of the week?
Yeah, and again, really on the Route four.
Well, on, on the Route four thing, I mean, last year we intended to just go back to the old C B. Whatever that language was, was it gonna be a cut and paste?
And we don't really like the form base.
Yeah.
It's over.
At all.
If I thought it was a discompliment or.
Okay.
Right, yeah, so, I mean, at a bare minimum, we can still do that. We're just gonna do that notification properly.
Right.
Um, and just leave it at that.
That's the state law. There's less than a hundred lots.
Something like that.
Is that what then?
Gotta be an affected.
Four, I was.
They need a hundred.
A letter.
Not certified, but just a general mail.
Verified, verified mail.
Yeah, yeah. But, um. I mean, it may be some stuff in the old C B that we can do have time to look at and change. But as a, as a bare minimum, we can just do that.
Right.
Dig up that old language and just say, we're going with this.
I mean, we can, we can give it some more.
Yeah.
Some more thought.
We got another two hours to work on this.
But, um, but that's good to know, history again, just trying to see, you know, what, what precludes.
That's the thirty second history is that there was a, there was a utility expansion project that went up Route four to the hill crest of the hill.
To the town line, basically.
Just before the town line, the crest of the hill.
Going Lebanon, sorry.
Well, where, where the granite is, that, that area, where, where the new police station is.
Yep.
Um, at that time, a lot of people were afraid that that was going to create Route twelve A's, cause uh, it was basically gonna open up big box development. And, uh, various charrettes were held at the time. People said they wanted it to look like New England and they did not. So hence, you know, the building footprint, or the building footprint limits were to keep it at a scale that was conducive to Enfield. People wanted something walkable. They wanted it mixed use. They wanted what the conceptual is in here today showing.
Right.
That's what they want.
Yeah.
You know, uh, maximum setbacks to have, so you wouldn't have kind of the big box look like it's way back from the room with a massive parking in front. People didn't want that. They wanted buildings closer. They eventually wanted sidewalks through there, something walkable. It, yeah, pitched roofs that look like New England, all of that sort of stuff was.
Demonstration.
Yes, what people said they wanted it to look like.
So we got the Dollar General.
Yeah.
Which, which technically meets all of those.
So that was, that was the, there was a consultant, Randy Saxton, who did most of the work on, on that district, a lot of the form-based code.
Mm-hmm.
Obviously. You know, it didn't develop that way. There wasn't this, you know, kind of avalanche of, that as soon as the utilities was done, it was gonna be, you know, the old corridor built out. It didn't really build out.
Right.
Few things happened here and there, the family dollar being the most kind of, you know, prominent of those, I guess, but.
With the fake windows.
And John Klug said to us, I hope the planning board learns to define demonstration.
The, you know, people, I think if, if there were real windows in the family dollar, people would think of that development very differently. The fake windows really do kind of, you know, it's odd.
Well, yeah, it should, yeah.
Yes.
I think, and that's good to know, and I think, um, you know, one of the things that we've, and you'll, while you're saying here, front yard required, is that is there some value to bring in to slow, have some calming effects on traffic? Have the buildings to that point closer and green space and parking and et cetera, behind, right? Like trying to make it more of that, what sounds like people were saying back then.
That's what, I mean, this was almost fifteen years ago.
Yeah.
And so it's, you know.
I think the answer is yes, but it's so restricted. Whenever people have come to Rob or put on platters, they said, I can't work with this.
Yeah. Okay.
In a perfect world, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So we all in the wild west.
Yeah.
But we, you know, we want some guardrails in place, but with some flexibility in the guardrails.
Got it. Thank you. That's helpful. All right.
I have never once heard somebody say, you know what we want, we want? Big box.
So, the irony is, I have heard people say.
Have you said?
Because, well, because people say, oh, I don't want all this stuff. I say, well, what do you? And they immediately go to a big box store.
Really?
After telling me they don't want a big, like, and, and it's exactly what they're thinking. I want a market basket. I want a Trader Joe's. I wanna, you know, whichever their, their particular favorite story.
Right, right.
Which are, which are big box stores.
Yeah, essentially, yeah.
You know, from a, from a visual standpoint, they're absolutely big box.
Yeah, market basket, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Right, so, so it's just interesting, like, so yes. But when I then ask them what they do want, I often get the answer is a big box store.
Yeah. But I guess I asked the question, have, have the big box stores come to Enfield?
We don't have the traffic, so.
That's the reason. We really don't have a problem looking for a solution.
Right.
In spite of that, the people who would shop, Enfield and Canaan people there, they're already in town.
Yeah.
You know, it's, they're driving home. And, and so they've already captured the people.
That's right.
In town.
If, if there was a market forum, they'd have already been here, or they would have been before the Z B A orbit before.
Right.
And we're not coming.
And back to that same timeframe, a group did get together and do uh, a really nice sort of study of the demographics and the, the traffic and stuff with the intent of making it available to grocery stores. And all the ones that were approached, including, you know, the co-op and Hannafords, because they hadn't built the Hannafords yet.
Yeah.
Also, you don't have enough traffic. We're not, we're not doing it.
Right.
Now, on the plus side, that study was given to Jakes and they said, we can work with that.
Yeah.
And so that, that city was part of why Jakes, so that's sort of the scale that are, that the demographics along Route four supports.
Mm-hmm.
But that adds to your roster, Eric, of, of versatility.
Yeah.
You know, where we can play around and broaden those guardrails a little bit to accommodate the smaller Jakes.
Right.
Uh, as opposed to a warmer.
Right. Okay, so are we done with old business, Top Grant?
Yep.
Okay. New business. Does anyone have any new business? Good. Uh, public comments. Shirley Green, you care to say something? No.
No.
Uh, next meeting, October twenty second, which will be devoted entirely or almost entirely to Larry.
Have two other.
We have two others?
And, and it's traffic night with Laramie, is that right?
Traffic and lighting.
Traffic and lighting.
No.
No?
No, because we're gonna go according to the order. I, I was mistaken when I said traffic and lighting.
Okay.
So we're gonna do traffic. We're gonna continue the discussion on the site visit. Because I had the sense that there were a lot of people that had a few things to say when the time ran out. We're gonna do the perimeter stuff, the buffers, we're gonna do traffic. And.
We are doing traffic.
Yeah, definitely, we're definitely, we're doing traffic.
But not lighting.
But not lighting.
Do they know that? Because they're bringing their lighting person.
I, I asked, I asked Rob to convey that to Carl.
Okay.
And I trust he is going to do that if he has not done that already. And, you know, I, I think, you know, Carl needs to know that we're gonna just go down the list in order. Has our independent engineer been contracted yet?
Yes. Yes, we're actually working on a meeting with, uh, Public Works and Town Manager.
Mm-hmm. And, and just for clarity, like, it, uh, Steve had been told he could meet with them sort of at the beginning. Steve asked me sometime this week. He, he thought, he wasn't sure when he would be open with them. I had said that my understanding was that he could meet with our independent person at the beginning of the process to bring up, to make sure they're looking at his concerns, isn't it?
Yeah. That, that's fine with me.
Yeah, I'm bringing it up here because that was my understanding from our last meeting. I wanted to make sure that I was conveying things properly to, to Steve. And then also we want to make sure that he gets that chance because he has marked up plans. He's done a very nice job. He's got more experience digging in this town than anybody.
Exactly.
Uh, and he knows how to read all the, and he's performed very similar work, so.
Yeah.
So having him talk with them early, I think it's. I, I think that's in the best interest of the project and the town.
But just one other thing, we did talk in, was it the end of July or the first meeting in August about the scope of work for the third-party engineer. One of the items we talked about in the realm of water was the water supply, evaluating the availability of water and the water supply.
Mm-hmm.
That is, I'm assuming, part of their scope of work that will be doing that. I have seen various chatters. I'm sure all of you have. If that question comes up, I think it would be, you know, appropriate to tell people that is in the third-party engineer's scope of work to do that analysis and, and provide that information. It's not like we've forgotten about that or anything like that.
My expectation is that we're gonna spend at least two hours discussing water supply. And you know. I, I would almo, I would rather almost have our third-party reviewer at that meeting just to speak to the water supply issue.
Yeah, I mean, when it comes up in the schedules, when it comes, I just, if people start asking about it.
Again, my question is, that's a yes and a question.
Yeah.
Do we have enough water to support it?
I think that's the point is that if, if that third-party comes to that meeting, I think it should be an upfront presentation with exactly the numbers.
Right.
Because that is a numbers question.
Exactly, yeah.
The, the other thing on the twenty second is, if I'm remembering correctly, it is the due date that was provided for the regional impact comments from neighboring municipalities. I do think we should take a few minutes, uh, you know, if we get comments from the neighboring municipalities at that meeting or the Regional Planning Commission to review those, uh, you know, publicly.
Absolutely.
On the twenty second, that's on the record.
Here's, here's my question that I hate to ask, but I'm gonna ask it anyways. The two hearings are good on the twenty second. How long are they gonna be?
One of them is a voluntary lot merger.
Okay.
Exactly. The other is the site plan, minor site plan for the new dealership going into Hale's Garage. This could.
Of course, that's.
No, it's a hearing.
It's a hearing.
Hearing. Of course, that's in a very, uh, well-developed area. It's a building that's already there, very small changes proposed for it.
Where's Hale's Garage?
It's right.
Hales to, uh, Randy's Car Wash between, uh, Enfield House of Pizza.
Oh.
It's the red building.
Oh.
That's Hale's Garage.
That could be a half hour.
I thought you said.
And that's why, that's why we're having on the.
Yeah.
Can we, can we kick it to the twenty ninth?
It's up to you. I could certainly talk to the applicant.
Um, that would certainly be preferable.
Okay, because we've probably got a half an hour worth of stuff from the regional planning and if we get that stuff.
Yeah.
Get anything from Lebanon or Kane.
Anything from Lebanon, Kane and Springfield. Can over.
Do we have anything yet, Rob?
That's still two weeks away.
Yeah. Um, yeah, if you can kick the Bobcat, the Bobcat dealership to the twenty ninth. Um, that would be preferable.
Although. I've already sent out the damn notices.
The files and notices.
Okay.
Well.
Well, we're having that hearing on the twenty second.
The other thing that, the other thing that we can do on that is we can open the hearing.
Continue.
We can hear his presentation, limited to ten minutes. And then continue it until the next meeting.
Um, discontinued hearings have to come first before new hearings? Oh, we're starting with Laramie firms?
Yeah.
That's a continued.
I think it's up to you. You guys can do it.
I, I don't know that there's anything that would require to be, is there?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
I sure would like to know. Because if the continued hearing has to go first. Because it's not a new hearing, it's a continued hearing. And we continued it to the meeting of the twenty second.
We dealt with the other two before we got to Laramie firms, didn't we?
No, we did Laramie afterward.
You did Laramie.
We, we did Laramie first.
We did Laramie first, we did the.
And then we did the other two afterwards, but they were, because they were new hearings.
Right.
But.
Anyway, it's the pecking order.
The pending.
Who gets the application in first? That's right. The continued hearing has to go before the other two.
I think that's the way we should do it because we'll have a lot of people in the audience.
Right.
And they are not gonna wanna care about a voluntary merger. And maybe only half of them will care about a Bobcat dealer.[1727.04]